Okay, we're gonna call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen Special Meeting Budget Workshop for February 28th, 2022. And we're gonna start with the Pledge Allegiance. The Pledge Allegiance.
The flag.
The United States. All right, we had started with number two, Public Speak. So we're gonna go to Erin Boris.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Diane Chukwem.
I'm all set, thanks.
All right, well, good to go. So our budget workshop for fiscal 2022, 2023, did everyone have a chance to review the document the Cherry put out?
I'm taking it came over today.
Say that again, Eric.
Did it come over today?
Yes, I think so.
I came over on Saturday, actually, Saturday morning.
Okay.
So I I'm assuming from my review of it is basically everything that we had agreed upon. There's some.
Yes, that's correct.
Some questions like where did the salt go? Like, are we doing something different with salt? Am I missing it?
Um. Also, it looks like this, the school number is still a hundred thousand below what we're currently looking at, so.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt, my internet kinda went a little weird. Did we, did we do public speak already?
Yeah, meeting's over.
It's close, it's close.
You missed it.
All right, and then your, your next question was you're looking at the, you're looking at the spreadsheet that Sherri sent, right?
Right.
Okay.
Um, the school budget reflects what is currently being brought to the Board of Education for their approval.
That's the current proposal number?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that had gone up because of the outplacement. My apologies.
Yeah, um, it was lower and then we put the outplacement in there. So what we initially had in there was a replacement of three percent.
Yeah.
You asked that I put the re- the number that it is.
So the four one two two is the current up?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanna make sure we weren't missing that in.
No, no, that's what's going before the Board of Ed on March 2nd.
Okay, all right. And Jeff, you had a question on salt?
To answer your question, the salt line went away and it's in the, the supplies line.
Yeah.
Just because the chart of accounts has changed a little bit. So it's still, it's still in there. There's still sixty thousand dollars roughly allocated towards salt. It's just not under the salt line item. It's under the, the winter snow removal supplies line item.
So what's under that, that line item? Sand and salts and dry mix?
Um, I can't tell you exactly.
Yeah, I have to check it myself, so. What all is in there? I don't know. I have to double check.
Can you tell us what line it is currently?
It's line three oh three six forty two.
Yeah, correct.
So you need to move that cabinet up. Anyway, I mean, those Sherri, those errors, like where something doesn't work, we've got to, we should fix those. You know, at least.
The final, are you talking about the ones in the final column?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that I'll do after tonight when you approve the budget for that says Board of Selectmen approved requests. If you make any changes, I'm not sure at this point, but if it stays as is, then I will address the Board of Finance approved request columns and I'll make sure that that gets fixed before moving forward.
Okay. You said it was, you said it was three oh three?
Zero three zero three and six four two. Under snow removal budget.
Yeah, I'm looking.
I mean, it, it makes sense, I mean, but this goes into purging our chart of accounts even further. If we're gonna do things like this, just keep getting rid of accounts.
Well, I don't intend to at this point, to be honest with you. I, I've made all the changes that I think the auditor will be agreeable upon. And I hope to just move forward with this chart of counts here on in.
Right, but I think what he's saying is that this because there's legacy items from before we changed the chart of accounts. Next year, when we have two years of data with this chart of accounts, we won't show all those lines that are basically zeroed out and there's nothing in.
Correct, absolutely, yeah.
Right, just this year, since we have both the new chart of accounts and the old charter of accounts represented here. So you can see what the total was, they're both displayed.
Right.
So I get that.
I'd like this, I'd like to see some minor changes if we're gonna leave it like this, though. So that residents and, you know, board members know where things are. So for instance, instead of just saying supplies, let's, you know, let's label it sand, salt, supplies, you know?
And we'll put it over in the notes.
Why can't we put it on the, why can't we put it in the name of the thing?
You could, but then, then what you're sitting there doing is, what happens when it's not sand and salt?
It, there's other things I'm sure that are in there. Um.
Well, prior to, prior to the change up, it looks like we had what? Six thousand dollars in there last year? So.
Correct.
And I, I guess that's my concern is like literally the biggest part of it is sand and salt. So let's, and those are things as a, that are our commodity that we need to, those are big things that we wanna be tracking. You know? And that goes into whether we're putting bids out for sand and salt or whether we're following a state bid or things like that. I think those are important, so. I would like, I would like to at the very least see the name change, please.
Well.
Okay.
Why, why?
I don't have a problem with that.
Let me say it. Just put the salt number in the salt line. It's really not that hard.
Yeah, that would make more sense to me. I mean, I would agree to it, but I understand what she's trying to do with purging, you know, that purges two lines right there if you do that.
Well, listen, I don't, a sand, sand is zero, right, Eric? You don't buy in sand, are you?
Uh, we occasionally buy some sand. We don't buy a lot.
We have leftover, we have leftover, cuz what we, we had a couple of light years and so we encouraged um, we encourage Public Works to buy as much sand as they get their hands on, so to use up the budget, you know? And, you know, you're always commodities network. So we, we bought as much as we could, so we stockpiled.
I mean, the same, the salt number is fifty eight thousand dollars. I, I personally would have no problem with you needing salt. But I don't know why you would want to consolidate that too. I mean, there's other things I would consolidate and I would get rid of line items. That one might not be one I would get rid of, but if you're going to, I understand where agents come and put supplies, sand and salt in the name, but leave salt. So.
That was the recommendation from the auditor. And I'm just, I was just going along with what he recommended. Um, we do, that's all. You want me to put it back? I'll put it back.
He's not gonna get really mad at one line item.
No.
I mean.
I mean, really.
You have a contract that when you buy the salt, Eric, am I not wrong? You have one contract or basically this is state contract you're going out and when you find it, you pay the state rate, right?
Uh, at the moment, we have two contracts going because we buy both treated and untreated salt.
Okay, and are they at the state contract rate?
Uh, one of them is the state contract rate. One of them is a rate we got directly from the vendor later in the year when it looked like they had sufficient stockpiles. They gave us a much better deal than we asked for.
Turns out salt is more complicated than any of us guessed.
Yeah, two, two whole invoices.
Yeah, but fifty eight grand worth.
It's a lot of money. I don't disagree with that. Lot of money, leaving its own line item. I mean, heck, it's.
All right, yeah, it, so um, are we moving sand into the supply line item? Are we good with that?
Or, go ahead.
All right, so you get to get rid of one, Sherri. You can put sand in the supply, but put sand, put sand in supplies and then keep salt separately.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions on any of the other items?
What, what do we have left to make decision, decisions on tonight?
I thought it was just the overall budget passing the whole thing up.
Correct.
All right, so this reflects all the changes we made last week to pay. Yes?
Yes, absolutely.
Eric, uh, uh, this last one, are you good with it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
How's everyone feel about it? I mean, we're thirty-three mils give or take?
I don't really care about the middle rate. I care about the overall increase. Oh, where is the totals for this whole thing? I know you have it on the revenue side, but.
So on the first page, under department totals.
No, it's at the top, right?
Below that is budget totals. It lists the total, the general budget, and then the general budget minus capital funds.
What page is that? First page?
First page.
It's line sixty-eight.
Yeah. Yep, sixty-eight.
We have a five hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase. Okay. So are we all good passing that number on to the Board of Finance? Four point one two percent increase total. Doesn't seem right. It doesn't, that seem right?
Think it's too low, too high? What do you think it's?
Now he's saying the number doesn't sound right.
The percentage increase doesn't seem.
Why?
This doesn't seem right in my mind, Eric. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I know what he's saying. I'm just trying to figure out where it is in the sheet.
So basically, it breaks down to this. The town budget increases ten point six seven percent, which is thirty-six, three, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. AES increases five point six five percent, which is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. RAM budget decreases one point four percent or seventy-one thousand dollars, which totals up to five hundred and, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars in overall spending increase.
All right, so here's a question, just so we all know where our numbers are coming from. What are our big increases? Cuz we're responsible to explain this to the public. Public Works is one of the big ones, right?
So first of all, capital spending increases a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That's the biggest single increase on the town budget side. And then.
How much was that? A hundred, a hundred and what?
A hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which is twenty-two percent. That's the biggest, by far the biggest increase.
Yep.
Okay, and then all the other town spending increases a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, of which seventy thousand roughly is the cost, a little over seventy thousand is the cost of the additional employee at Public Works. And twenty thousand dollars of that is the cost of the temp summer hire at Public Works. And about twenty-five thousand dollars is increased spending at Public Works um, for building maintenance and stuff like that.
So the, the total Public Works increases one forty-five, three fifty-one.
Yeah, that's, that's roughly right.
Yep. I liked your breakdown, Eric, thank you.
What was your, what was your increase, Jeff? One what?
One forty-five, three fifty-one fifteen. So everything else is, is, is under, under ten thousand dollars, every other department.
I mean, based on his highlight numbers, then there's another twenty K somewhere in Public Works because he said twenty, twenty for the part-time hire, seventy-seven for the um, the full-timer and twenty-five for building. That still leaves us twenty K somewhere else in Public Works.
Yeah, a big chunk of that is, you know, we've been consistently underfunding, you know, both the Public Works equipment line item.
Oh, yeah, maintenance equipment, that's right, we discussed this. So sorry.
That's where most of that is.
Okay, yep, yep, yep.
So if you, if you go through and you look at other departments or line items that have increased over ten thousand dollars, so you have the town garage, there was a seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
Forty-five dollar increase.
I mean, it, but you know, so when we talk about a, a budget with several hundred lines in it, but really it comes down, this is where the, this is where it is. I mean, it's give or take. You know, you know, give or take three big, three big lines, you know, or three big.
But, but remember too, that part of the reason why this doesn't look a lot worse than it does is the fact that one, we've retired the bond at AES, which nets the town ninety-three thousand dollars. And we have also paid off the loader, which nets the town, you know, thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two, yeah.
Right.
Right.
So there is, we are increasing spending in this budget pretty significantly. Um.
But I, I think.
When you take out those two factors.
The question, the question becomes, is this following what we have talked about for the last three or four years? Is, is this going in the direction that we said we wanted the town to go? You know, are we, are we bringing everything in line with what we know is a functioning town hall, a functioning Public Works? And getting the town back to where it needs to be? And is this, I think the other question, I think the question that the residents are gonna ask us is, is this it? Are we finally there? Is this the last swath of getting things sort of ironed out on a bigger budget scale? I mean, I think this puts us pretty much where we need to be with Public Works. It's not perfect for capital spending, but I think it's functional. Um, we've certainly got the salaries, I think, lined up. I don't know that there's much, there, I mean, there may be some tweaks, but I don't know that there's a lot more coming at all that I can think of that we need to be asking about. I mean, anyone else disagree with that? Is there something else since that we've completely overlooked? I mean, I know we could.
Adrian, I just, I think one thing we ought to highlight in this whole budget is that the, the fact of the matter that we can basic, we're basically gonna pay for the community center. And that money that we would have had to raise through a bond would have been substantial as well. So we're actually getting to expand Public Works, uh, meet the needs of the school and meet the needs of the town and get a community center on top of this for, you know, pretty much a modest increase. It's not, it's not anything I would think that would be you know, out of realm of, you know, with the, with the con inflation and everything going on. I mean, you, you know, like the school went up, fuel costs went up.
Right.
It's just, it's the nature of the beast, unfortunately.
But I think the other thing too is I, I think I, I, I'm okay with it because the number one thing we have been hearing for the last two years is Public Works, Public Works, Public Works. Why aren't you addressing my road? Why aren't we fixing the puddles here? Why aren't we fixing the puddles there? So you know? So we're, we're trying to put our money where our mouth is and address those issues, but it takes money. It can't just be done for free, so.
Uh, the four point one two percent is accurate, so.
It is.
The math is right.
Okay.
That's the number, one two.
Okay.
So four point one two.
And I think the other thing you do have to keep in mind is last year, essentially, the budget for the town and the school was flat.
Right.
So when you put it in that perspective, you know, you can basically say, you know, part of what we're doing is making up for the fact that we went, we ended up with a completely flat budget last year. Um.
Well, wasn't it really, it almost was the last two years.
No, not two years. The year before, we definitely had an increase. But um, you know, part of the, the issue last year was we were just coming off of that period where we had excess unexpended fund balance to burn. You know, and the farther we get, the less of that there is, you know, and that, you know, that's what we've been using to offset some of the bigger expenses.
So in our revenue this year, we have a hundred thousand dollars of unused fund balance reused.
Yeah, that was the, what the auditor suggested we could use as a number prior to getting the final audit complete.
Are we, where are we at with the, the audit? I mean, I thought that we were on track to get this audit before this budget got locked up.
I put a call into him and I yet, um, he's supposed to call me back. I would assume that he's gonna talk to me tomorrow because he should have had everything done today.
So, so when were you expecting it, Sherri? Did he give you a timeframe?
Well, he took an extension to February twenty eighth. So here we are.
It now, if he puts in another extension, don't we have to sign it?
Um, yeah, we have to approve it.
And he hasn't come back for, for a signature?
Oh, yeah, but tomorrow morning, I'm, I'm gonna give him, um, definitely a call if he hasn't returned my call.
Okay.
And why do we have an extension? Did I miss something?
Cuz any, anytime you go past.
None.
If it's, if you start going into the new year and your audit's not ready, you have to get an extension. I think they run them on thirty days, right?
Right.
So.
Correct.
And you know, I, I mean, listen, where the problem is, we're a small town, so we end up on the, on the bottom of everybody's pile. So I don't know that we're ever gonna get a an audit done in January unless our town triples in size, but um, in the meantime, you know, they've been pretty good to us, so.
And why do, why do small towns get bumped down to the bottom?
Cuz our budget to do an audit's like thirty-three thousand and, you know, you talk about somebody like Hebrun or Coventry, you know, they're, they're three times that. So.
We have been slowly moving up the pecking order.
Yeah, I mean, so I take it seven, seven years, but.
When they took us on as a client originally, you know, they were pretty clear that it was going to be delayed every year because, you know, they had more than they could accomplish in the fiscal year. Um, now, last year, the auditor said he thought they had enough of their clients had dropped off that he thought they could get it, us done a lot more timely. That hasn't really worked out. Um, you know, and I'm not overly happy about it. It's always nice to go into budget season with a completed audit, but.
Yeah, for perspective, though, Paul, that we've put this out to bid and um, we got three bids each time we did it, basically. Um, one of them was unqualified, like literally there are news stories about the horrors of this person being an auditor. One person was out of, the one, one group was out of Maine. Um, not a, not a great situation either. And, and then this, you know, this, this group, so um, they were not the cheapest, but um, at least they had, you know, they, they had a decent reputation in Connecticut and they were, they're willing to work with us. Cuz at the time we were looking, we were like, you know, we, we basically had had multiple audits and multiple treasurers come through, you know, in, in several years, so that, that just were horrible, so.
I mean, they are a very good firm and I've worked with them before.
Right.
In another district, so.
They were, they were a known quantity versus some of these like we had literally someone that was in northern Maine that was gonna you know, send someone down to take all of our stuff and then go back to Maine with it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
What? One other thing that we're, we're gonna have slightly increased maintenance costs at the Veterans Park.
Is that in the budget?
I, I don't think that's changed out at all on the budget.
Well, isn't, are you talking about since the accident? I thought we were putting in an insurance claim and.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, ongoing maintenance, you know, fertilizer, lime, that kind of stuff.
He's talking for the ball field.
Taking care of the, we're gonna be taking care of the Veterans Park also.
Did, did we talk about this? I'm, I'm.
That's the first time I'm hearing of it.
First I hear of that. Myself.
Scott, can you? I know that, I, I know that they're gonna be mowing it for free, but I'm, I'm not expecting them to pay for all the fertilizer and everything else to keep the grass up.
Well, can you, can we expect them to pay for it so that we don't have to play with this budget anymore? I mean, what, do we have a number? Do we have a?
What?
Scott, do you have any more information on that?
Three thirteen, four twenty, maybe?
Three hundred and thirteen dollars?
No, I don't, I don't have any information yet. We've, we haven't done it yet. Adrian's first time. So, me to pay for it, is that what you guys are getting at or what?
No, I think we're trying to understand what kind of number we need to plug in here. Are we pulling it out of the air or do we, do you have a, I mean, are we, are we a thousand dollars? Are we five hundred dollars? Are we?
No, I would, I would say that five hundred or less would probably do it.
What line item should it go in, Scott?
Maybe mowing ground care.
Can you give us the, uh?
It's a row five one one, three, three, four, two, zero.
Row five one one?
Yeah.
Yep. Jeff, are you all right? Mr. McGuire? You do not sound good.
No, because of the mask mandate, I caught COVID.
Did you really catch COVID?
I did.
Sorry to hear that. I'm glad to see you're on your feet, though.
I'll stop by with some chicken soup for you, Mr. McGuire.
No, you're all set, Paul. I appreciate it, though.
He's a meatarian. He doesn't eat chicken soup.
I ate, I had made my own soup today. I am capable.
Good job.
That's probably why he sounds like that, cuz he made his own chicken soup. All right, so we have twenty thousand dollars approved in that line?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one thousand.
We went up, we went up a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I meant previously, so we went up a thousand.
I'm gonna ask why.
So did that not encompass that, Eric?
I, I mean, you know, you're springing this on me now that we suddenly wanna do extra stuff at the monument. I mean, I know Jerry asked.
It's not, no, no, he's, he's talking about, he's talking about the field, that Veterans Field.
No, he's actually talking about the memorial.
No, he's talking about the memorial, Scott, am I correct?
Yeah.
I mean, Jerry went to you guys earlier this year and told you that he wanted twenty thousand dollars a year and that he would maintain that. But it didn't sound like you guys wanted to entertain that, so I have. So I have not adjusted the budget for any of that. If you decide you wanna add extra money into it for something specific, then. You know, so be it. The only thing I was accounting for is the fact that we now have one extra sprinkler system we gotta blow out. Um, and we have, we're gonna have costs associated with that.
Right. Okay, I have a question on that line item, Eric, uh, or Sherri, like currently we only have five thousand dollars expended. Is the contract with Hebron? Front loaded? I mean, do they charge us all in April? When do they charge us?
That I don't know. I. Haven't gone through that cycle yet.
Well, does twenty K cover that contract? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, we've been able to cover it. We went over the year before. Due to expenses. Uh, dealing with the sprinkler system. You know, but twenty thousand should cover. The maintenance costs for that field and the mowing costs associated with Andover landscaping.
So let's, let's. Let's either leave the twenty one thousand dollars in there and see where we end up this year. Or Scott, if you want, do you want us to add a thousand dollars to this? And would you like to propose? What makes sense for, for what you're thinking, Scott?
I, I don't, I don't think we need a thousand dollars. I don't think that that.
Well, I mean, look, let's, I'm just gonna say what everyone's not saying is that we need a number associated with that. Park so that this doesn't turn into. A twenty thousand dollar expense.
It's not. Adrian, last year I did it, it was less than a hundred bucks.
No, I'm just saying if we're, you know, if Jerry came to us and said he was asking for.
Yeah, but Jerry, yeah, but that's. It's just, it's just maintenance, taking care of the grass, fertilizing it, liming it. That's all. It's not, not gonna cost a lot of money.
Okay, so propose what you want then, so we can move on.
I would, I would, I, I propose, you know, five hundred dollars should be enough to take care of that part of it.
Okay, seconded.
Alright, further discussion. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi. So we're increasing that line item from twenty one thousand to twenty one five.
Mr. Murray, would you like to vote on that?
I am an I. Thank you.
You're welcome. So Sherri, if you'll make that twenty one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay. I will.
Okay. Is there anything else that anyone would like to? Bring up?
No, I think we're kinda. I think we're kinda there. I didn't get a chance to open your workbook yet, Eric. Is that your budget draft book? Is that pretty much reviewing the things that we were talking about as far as the expense? Do you have a highlight area? Did you put a highlight area in there?
Hot, what do you mean by a highlight area?
Well, so for instance, as we talked about, you know, we basically have. You know, we had capital, we had a townwide, we have public works. Those are the three big drivers. Did you, do you like it over, in overall? To explain what the drivers were?
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm asking, cause again, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I did not get a chance to read it today, but between getting home and.
Yeah, and I said yes.
Okay. And unfortunately, it's still not loading. I get a spinning thing.
That, that is, uh. The text of the budget document could be addressed even after us. When are you planning on giving this to? Board of Finance, Eric? Once we prove it?
Tonight, yeah, tomorrow, probably. Since our first budget meeting is in two days. Gonna have to go to him tomorrow.
Okay. I went through it, Adrian. I didn't have a problem.
And I also read it, Adrian.
Okay.
This document.
So basically, we're, we have a. Proposed budget to send to the Board of Finance of twelve million, nine hundred thirty nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety two dollars.
So, go ahead.
Anybody got any issues with it?
No, so my, my only question is how do we wanna handle? Do we want to? Do a separate? Um, proposal for the funds, American Cares Act funds for the community center?
Sure, why don't we do two motions? One to approve the entire budget and one to. Utilize those funds for the community center. Alright, so. Let's make a motion on the overall budget, or actually make a motion on the use of the Cares Act.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we use the, um. The American Cares Act funds for the funding of an Andover Community Center. Not to exceed one million dollars.
Second down.
Yeah, further discussion on that issue?
Sir, why are you gonna spend the whole million on that? When you've got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in a multi-use building fund specifically for that? Might allocate one half of the American Cares Act funds for that. Well, for keep the remainder for other things.
Well. I, I. There's a couple of issues there. One is. Do we build a building and then not staff it after the fact? Cause that's one of the issues that we have is that, you know, we, we really have been struggling to staff our community resources. You know, we, we know we woefully understaffed them. You know. We have us, uh, you know, we have. Coordinators that, you know, do a lot of things that are not getting paid now, and, and we know that's not gonna continue forever. You know? So. Step one, step two, I think, once the, once the building is done and we start talking about putting things in the building. You know, the building cost does not include. You know. Maybe some of the things that we need in the building to make it more functional. I E electronics, um, chairs, all that wonderful stuff.
Right, and the building cost may not include all the parking changes.
Yeah, that may be a separate issue as well. After the fact, so. We have some after the fact issues that we may have to deal with.
Okay.
Do you have?
Answered your own question.
Do you have any other specific areas also? And this is one of the drivers, is it, do you have any other specific areas that we can spend that funds on? We can't use it for trees, we can't use it for roadwork. So.
Well, we don't know that yet. We won't know that until such time. As the auditor completes the audit and gives us the report. You know, of year to year comparables, so we know how much of it. You know, falls under that category and how much of it can be used to make up lost revenue. So the answer to that is we don't know that.
You can't use it to make up lost revenue. That was made very clear.
How, uh, Eric?
I'm not gonna risk a town, I'm just gonna say right now, I'm not gonna risk a town audit to try to work in a gray area and be like, you know. Some of these other towns that are getting audited because of that.
Well, I, I would just ask the question, how long do we have to spend those dollars?
Two years plus.
So Eric, we'll know at the end of our audit what we can potentially spend on if there's any other options.
Correct.
Okay. And.
Well, I, I, I'm still trying to. Go ahead.
I have no, I have no problem with. Sitting there saying we wanna allocate it all to the community center.
Right. We also know that in general. The, the, the other issue here is in general. If we, 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 we approve a certain amount of money and then we end up short on the building, cause. The one issue we run into is we have to stay under a million. If we go over a million. We'll end up in a Davis Bacon territory and we will. We'll need that extra four hundred K just to, just to, just to complete it. So. And this is why, that's kinda what happened with the soccer fields, remember? You know?
The soccer field?
Do you remember when you built on the field and your numbers kept climbing? Cause it became a union project?
The soccer field was a four hundred thousand dollar project.
Right. Right.
Never changed, Adrian.
When they, from the initial, from the initial estimate, it didn't change?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Five thousand dollars or something, maybe?
No, it's more than that.
No.
I mean, the only major change was when the town. Contemplated whether they wanted, cause there was only enough money to build a truncated field. If the town had elected to build a regu- regulation sized soccer field. It would have been a considerably more expensive endeavor.
That is a regulation soccer.
It is.
No, the one that's down there now. But when the, we had the plans to put it behind the elementary school. The deciding factor between a full-size field.
Was cost.
Condensed field was the amount of fill that had to be brought in. And since the town wasn't willing to spend any of their own money. You know, the hard cap. Wasn't gonna allow you to build anything more than a truncated field.
So that was the cost shift when it went to the other field. It got bigger.
Uh, I mean, I'm just confused, like it, it, you know, that.
Right, well anyways, look, the bottom line is that the state has, the state has a certain figure for each project.
Yeah.
And for a, for a new construction. The cap is a million dollars. We, our goal is to stay under a million.
Okay, so, so we're gonna utilize. The Cares Act Fund to keep the project, to build the building.
Right.
You know, under a million dollars.
Exactly. And then we may use the, the other funds to do some of the build out of. You know, like, you know, other types of things that will make that building more functional for different, for different events.
Understood. So does anybody have a problem with that? It's already been seconded. Does anyone wanna have any further discussion on this? So all those in favor of, of the motion? Hi.
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 Okay. Alright, now, if someone can make a motion on the overall budget.
I'll make a motion that we. Accept the budget presented tonight by the. Uh, Town Treasurer. You want the number?
Sure.
Alright, hang on.
Twelve million. Nine hundred thirty nine thousand.
Three hundred and ninety two.
No, we eight hundred and.
Eight hundred and ninety two.
We've just passed a motion at five hundred dollars to feel.
Uh, yeah, sorry, my bag.
No problem.
I still have it in don't edit mode.
I got it.
I'll second that.
So twelve million, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars.
Thirty nine thousand.
Five hundred and, or sorry, you had five hundred, so eight hundred and ninety two.
Eight hundred and ninety two, perfect.
Right.
Yeah. And Scott, you seconded that.
Right.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Jeff Murray?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, so. Uh, I think we're actually done. Is there anything else? Well, one other thing we need to do before we leave our meeting. Um, we have to, uh, schedule another special meeting. Sometime this week for two issues. One is, uh, the B A A, we have to appoint an alternate. And on this meeting, I'd like to actually. Have an employee, have it put on the agenda. To discuss an employee matter. Related to Mr. Anderson. Alright, alright, so we have to do the, the, uh, B A A one before the twelfth. So does anyone have time? This shouldn't be a very long meeting. I know, no one wants to have any more meetings, but. Thursday? Wednesday? What works?
Wednesday, I've got Board of Education and Thursday have plans already.
Okay.
Tomorrow night?
Adrian, what time are your plans? Can we sneak it in before that or no?
No, I've got a meeting at five o'clock and it's probably gonna be two hours, two and a half, so.
On Wednesday?
Thursday, I've got a meeting on Wednesday for Board of Education for their budget.
Are you going to my birthday party on Wednesday?
No, unless it's at the Board of Education, no.
God's birthday? That's correct.
Happy birthday. We have to sing. That means we gotta sing tonight.
Not today, regular meeting.
No, 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 no.
We only have, we, we have very few people here, so we're good.
You want, I can do, can anyone do tomorrow night?
That is my anniversary, so.
Oh, happy.
Happy anniversary.
I mean, we have to sing, happy anniversary?
Yes.
Can we do it Monday then? That would give us time, well, actually, if I remember, Georgette's. Email. I think she needed to get this done.
Can we, do we have people for the appointment already?
There's two potential individuals right now.
Okay.
And we, we jump, can I jump on, if we do it tomorrow? Can we appoint them tomorrow for, like, take five minutes and I can jump on?
Eric, I think we have to post the meeting for forty eight hours anyway.
Twenty four hours. You could do it tomorrow, but you'd have to do it at eight P M. No, cause you can't publish it in time, nevermind.
It'd have to be.
Do it tomorrow.
Have to be Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
I think they have a meeting on Wednesday, so they probably need it before Wednesday.
No, this issue is related to just two cases. It involved.
Okay.
Well, I, I think. Yes, I think you, you, you're gonna need it for more than two cases. Because Georgette is going in for an operation and will be out of commission for a period of time. So you need to plan on a third competent replacement for the B A A.
But, uh. The way I understood it was that. All of the hearings would be taken care of before she went in for her procedure.
Maybe, yeah.
And, and there were two issues that were out there that had to be. Decided. There wasn't as if it was every hearing. It was only two specific hearings. That have to be. Okay, so.
Friday.
I don't, I'm, I'm all about, whatever you want from me.
Adrian, Friday?
I can make Friday work.
Paul King?
Yep, I'll be calling in, but I can make it work.
Okay, uh, you know, I know we try to always have our meetings on time, but it's five o'clock work for everybody, so we can get it over with.
Uh, I'm.
Jeff Murray, are you with us?
I'm not always done working by five, but I will do my best.
I'll six.
Yes, I'm with you.
Jeff Murray, can you do Friday or Friday at like?
Six.
Thirty or six?
Or what?
This is a meeting related to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
To make an appointment.
Yeah, I guess. I'm starting a new job tomorrow, so I, you know, if I can't come, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. It's Friday, so let us know.
Alright, well, let's do, let's do six P M on Friday then.
Okay, so Eric, can we get that posted and?
Do you wanna, do we wanna wait until? Maybe Jeff will know tomorrow if he can do six on Friday. If not, we can do a different time. That'll still give us forty eight hours.
Sure.
So if you just hold it Jeff until, or Eric until Jeff reaches out to you tomorrow to clarify time?
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, so. Does anybody have any other issues that we need to discuss before we move on to item four? Okay, we're good. Uh, item four is correspondence. We don't have any. Item five is public speak. So we'll go through our list. Uh, Joanne Hebert, you are first.
Seth, thank you.
Alright, Diane Chocat.
Also, I says, thank you for supporting the seniors, giving us money for the. Community Center.
Okay, Victoria Kavanaugh.
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, um. I think we're good. Paula, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second in.
Alright, all further discussion, none, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Alright, thank you very much, Sherri. Thank you for your time, Eric. For your time.
Thanks.
Good night.